At six P M. I'd like to call the March fourth East Lime Board of Ed regular meeting. First, our business, if we can, for those who can stand, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment? Public comment?
Are any public in the hall?
Yeah.
You guys can come in. Oh. Okay. I just didn't know they were public who wanted to comment.
Any public comment? Last chance, any public comment? Okay, hearing none. We will close public comment. And next our business is we do have executive session matter to discuss. Interview the for the twelve month Eastline Middle School Principal and also interview for the twelve month Eastline High School Principal elect. Motion move. And we're panelists.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of interviews and to include superintendent newly and assistant superintendent Annalise. Spaziano.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Stained. Okay, we are in executive session and we're going to move to the other room for second session. Right, so it is now six thirty-one and we've just. Out of executive session where we had two different discussions, the first was to interview. You know, for the twelve month Eastline Middle School Principal and the other discussion was to interview a candidate for the twelve month Eastline High School Principal elect. So we've come out of executive session and we have some minutes to approve. We first have the minutes from the February fifth Board of Ed regular meeting. Comments or changes?
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the February fifth meeting.
Second. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Stained. She was switching over. Maybe we'll see her, yeah.
The waiting room.
Oh, there's Lee.
That's Jill. Oh, Lee's on the bind.
Joe, okay. You're good with the minutes, Lee, are you good with the February fifth approving those minutes?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we have minutes from the February twenty-sixth Board of Ed public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the February twenty-sixth meeting, public hearing.
Second.
Favor, say aye.
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 You all, I see. And we, okay, opposed, abstained. Okay, those minutes pass. And then we have the minutes from the February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four Board of Ed special meeting.
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the February twenty-sixth special Board of Ed meeting.
And I'd like to second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained. When its motion passes. Okay, done with the minutes, move on to special reports. And. No, nope. And but we do have our state representative Holly Chispano, so thanks Holly, thanks so much, if you want to.
You up here?
Sure, yeah, Holly, that'd be great. Come on.
Excuse my back to everybody. So yes.
Thanks for coming.
Contacted me and said, hey, it's been a while since you've given us an update, so I was delighted to accept his invitation first. I had a great start to my day, I've been bookended by Eastlime Schools because I was very happy this morning to participate in Read Across America at Lily B. Haynes. Where I read to second and third grade classes, which is always so much fun, you know, there are some things that are not so much fun about doing this job, but. That is one of the things that I really enjoy, that and Eagle Scout ceremonies and obviously coming to talk to you is. So just in terms of general background, we are in the short session of the biennial budget and technically this session is devoted to budget adjustments. That's all that's supposed to happen, of course, that is not all that's going to happen, but the the big. What we wait for is to see what the governor proposes in terms of those budget adjustments. And I'm sure you're aware, last year, we passed a hundred and fifty million dollars in enhanced spending on education. To speed up fully funding the education cost sharing grant, limiting the tuition that magnet schools could charge districts. And let's and again appropriating that a hundred extra hundred and fifty million, well, the governor came in with his. Budget Director Jeff Beckham and made some changes to that hundred and fifty million and redirected some of that money. Both the money that would fund the magnet schools, it's now based on actual enrollment, they're sending a lot of the tuition back to the districts. And out of that extra hundred and fifty million, he proposes to dedicate forty million of that to early childhood education, which of course is important. But was not really in the packages was agreed, there's been pushed back from both sides of the aisle, this was the agreement we had. And nothing is set in stone, so I would stay tuned. There are going to be some arguments over that and at the end of the day. To be frank, I don't know what's going to happen. I, you know, I and the other members of the delegation and the legislature continue to say this was the the promise you made, we need to keep it, our districts are relying on it, so. Stay tuned for that one, we continue to hear districts having trouble with the right to read proposal, again, there are, there's. A lot of impetus for having S D E be more flexible and simply because they're, they seem. Many people have told me seem to be somewhat inconsistent in how they grant the waivers. I don't know where you are in terms of this, I know in our early discussions, you know, you were happy with your reading program and we're really not happy about spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a new one. So again, that's another one on which you can stay tuned. I did print off the agendas for the Education Committee, there are a lot to do with early childhood, there are a lot concerning. There's a panel, it's a task force that's looking at all the mandates that the state puts on you and is there a way to reduce those, are there some that are now outdated and we can get rid of? Because again, I know what a burden these unfunded mandates place on our districts, I mean, I put forward a bill, I don't think I did it this year, just about every year. To require a two thirds, two thirds vote of the legislature, if it's an unfunded mandate. Because it's, it's really not fair, if we genuinely believe as a legislature and a state that this is a program that must happen. Then we should put our money where our mouth is. And if not, then, you know, think twice, and certainly I think. Districts need more of a place at the table, I mean, one of my frustrations is very often legislation is passed and yes, we have public hearings and things like and all that, but. The people at the pointy end are really not included when you're drafting that final legislation, whether it's to do with schools, whether it's to do with small business, whether it's to do with healthcare. And then a lot of times we end up going back and fixing the things we've done and revisiting them. There, as you will know, a lot of push for more housing. One of my concerns, as I'm sure yours is, if the state is going to tell a dis- a town. You need, you know, all this affordable housing, help the towns with money for sewer infrastructure. Because that's a constraint, money for the additional children that are going to be in the district, you know, when you hear that there are developments coming. And you're, you know, in town government and here at the schools, what is that going to mean for us? And if, again, if this is a worthy project that the state feels we should do, and again, no one would argue. That we need affordable, affordable housing, we need the people who work in our towns to be able to buy houses or rent apartments. Let's have some skin in the game, as opposed to being, you know, this is the mandate, you have to do this and. You know, it's your problem to worry about how you're going to pay for those extra kids or how you're going to build out your sewer capacity or make all those accommodations, so. I think that's about it, the session will end May eighth. And most of the committees will be finished their work by the end of March. Finance, revenue and bonding, where I'm the ranking member has and appropriations have the latest deadlines because we typically have to wait till. Those final tax receipts come in, so we know how much money we have and how much money we have to spend, we are very close to the the state. Now constitutionally mandated and defined spending cap, so there's not that much room to move. One of the things I'm looking at on the finance side. We have three billion dollars in stranded tax credits. These are tax credits that are given to businesses, corporations, that they can apply against their income tax obligation, there's three billion dollars out there that they haven't spent. That's three billion dollars that we can't appropriate because it's out there and they might claim it at some. So I, along with that both the governor's office and my Democrat counterparts on the finance committee are looking very closely at tax credits. Because that's money, if they're not using it, that's money that's actually available for us, you know, it's like, I'm going to have to spend ten thousand dollars on my kid's college, so I've set that money aside. Well, it turns out he or she didn't go to college, I could spend that money now and say it's something comparable, so. Stay tuned on that, I think there's a real desire to look at that and, you know, if the goal of the tax credit is to create jobs. And grow the economy, is it actually accomplishing that, or is it simply for many companies, you can trade tax credits, is an accounting method, you can sell them on at sixty percent to other companies, so. You know, there, there's room for improvement. On the other hand, the fiscal guardrails, which limit, you know, the bonding and the the revenue cap and the spending cap, we have eight hundred million dollars a year now. That we have to spend on programs because we paid down seven billion dollars in pension debt. And that's, that's big. So there, you know, it's not all doom and gloom. I mean, the state is in a much better financial position than it's been in many years. But we need to continue on that and we need to find a way to get, you know, more voices like yours heard and not that. Mandates handed down and have unilateral decisions made that you have to deal with on a daily basis, so. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Sorry. Any questions?
Jamie, can I get a copy of that agenda? The agenda, do you have a copy?
Oh, I have all the, these are the public hearing agendas, do you want? You know, I'll forward them to you. Yeah, the next one is Wednesday, February twenty-first, which is an act establishing Early Start Connecticut, an act implementing the recommendations of the Department of Education. An act implementing the recommendations of the Office of Early Childhood, an act implementing the recommendations of the Technical Education and Career System. Technical revisions, an act concerning public education in the state and an act concerning schools, and you know, you can't tell from those titles what they are and very often they'll be placeholders, we're going to, you know. Pass this and we'll see what goes in, but. And again, you know, certainly with the public hearings, you can now testify remotely, you don't have to go up in person. And also you can submit written testimony, you don't have to, you don't even have to show up, but if, you know, if it's something on which you want to be heard, by all means do it, I mean, you pay as a legislator, you pay much more attention. If you see a particular bill has garnered, you know, ten, twenty, forty, a hundred pieces of testimony, so. And even after something comes out, if you know, if there are changes you want made, it ain't over till it's over, I mean, they're, they're making changes on the floor, so again, it it's never too late. Up, you know, up until the vote is actually taken for you to make your voice heard, so, and again, please reach out to me, if there's anything I can do, I mean, send that message to everybody here. Because that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Holly, publicly too, should be great for phone calls, we spoke a lot post-COVID every other week or so. They've backed off a little bit, but you're, you're always a phone call away and we spoke about excess costs and special education, so thank you for your work.
And I'm, I'm going to love you and leave you. You know, I had one of those weekends, I'm blessed to still have my dad in my life, but he is almost ninety-eight and we had a couple of emergency room trips, so I'm still sort of catching up from that. But I want to thank you, I'm just sorry I won't be here for the goodies.
Thanks so much, Holly. Bye. Next order of business, we have a consent agenda item.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as posted.
Second. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye. Opposed and abstained. Perfect. For those of you here or at home, this was a removal of a proposed out of country field trip to Costa Rica from April twelfth to the nineteenth and. Those who care, Esteban abstained because it's his wife's trip, so that's how it all, how it worked out, so.
Good.
I'm not going.
That's a little.
Okay.
It's a minimum of two.
So the next order of business, discussion action items personnel, so the first. Item is discussion action, proposed appointment of the one point O F T E twelve month principal for Eastline. Middle School, we have Claudine Kelly here and. I'll just say a quick thing and then turn it to Jeff, but I, you know. Really appreciate Claudine has been the interim for nearly a year and and has done a phenomenal job and we've gotten great feedback and we're really excited to have. Claudine come and potentially do this full time after, oh, but I'll pass it over to Jeff, but thanks Claudine.
Yeah, I agree, it's, it's been an honor to work with with Claudine over the years and watched her grow as a professional, she's, she's a wonderful person. She's wonderful with her staff, wonderful with parents, one of the hardest workers, you know, we know, and has done a phenomenal job and we've seen that. So I'm proud to say we are taking the title interim off of, you know, her resume and making her the official principal, it's the right move and she's going to do a great job moving forward.
With that said, I would like to make a motion to remove the interim title and appoint Claudine Kelly for the position of one point O F T E twelve month principal of Eastline High School, effective immediately?
Effective immediately.
Effective immediately, I like that.
Send out a letter tomorrow, I have it drafted. Bill seconded, any further comment? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstained, congratulations.
My daughter, Weyland. Hi, my son Ryan.
Hello.
And this is Ryan's girlfriend, Isabella.
Thank you for being with us.
Welcome.
Appreciate it.
They've been a big support and, you know, helpful with pitching, helping out on the late nights and doing whatever I need to have him help me get things done at home, so I I appreciate their support greatly. As do I appreciate the support of the board and Jeff and Annalise and everybody else, so thank you so much for this opportunity, I'm excited.
Thank you for sharing your mom with us, appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay. And then the next quarter of business, we have the discussion action, proposed appointment of one point O twelve month principal elect. Eastline High School Henry Kidd. And. You know, first, you know, thank Deb Kelly for her time. Long time over from counselor to principal to principal, if I missed anything in between, apologies, but.
Principal during COVID.
Principal during COVID, yes, you get extra points for that, done a phenomenal job and appreciate Deb, and Deb is agreeing to kind of stay on through December to ensure a smooth handoff, which is. Unusual, but fantastic that we have that opportunity to have a really smooth transition, so Deb, thanks and really excited to have Henry come in, going from. Teacher to assistant principal to principal and look forward to what he's going to do, so appreciate it.
Yeah, I I wouldn't want to see two greater people transition with Deb Kelly and Henry Kidd, I mean, they're wonderful individuals. This is going to really help, I think, propel the high school forward, you know, typically, when you bring in somebody new from the outside, it takes a period of time. As I mentioned to the board, and we won't have that, we'll be able to continue seamlessly forward and that's going to be because of the relationship that Deb and Henry have. And the great work that we've seen with Deb and is going to continue in with Henry, so I'm excited, I think, you know, we were lucky in the sense that that this has worked out the way it has, so Deb, thank you very much. Henry, we're excited to have you next year, take over and continue the great traditions.
I would like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Henry Kidd as principal elect of Eastline High School to become a one point O F T E twelve month principal on January one, twenty twenty-five.
For the comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Congratulations, Henry, we're excited to. And Deb too, either one of you want to say a few words, you're welcome to, and introduce your family as well.
I mean, I wanted to say thank you to Deb, again, it's, it's a great opportunity to be able to spend a year. Thinking about something that I'm be doing a year from now, not many people, as Jeff said, get that opportunity to think and plan and I couldn't ask for a better partner than Deb here. Deb, you know, the Eastline High School community owes a debt of gratitude to Deb for taking over the helm of the school in June, a couple of months after the pandemic hit. After we had our previous principal resign, but she's done a fantastic job and, you know, just. Really excited for for Deb and all of, you know, her next adventures with her family, so congratulations, Deb. And I'm very excited as well to be able to do this here in Eastline, the place that I've called home for twenty years, where I've met, you know, my wife Alexa. And so this is just an overwhelming and just great moment for me personally, so just appreciate the vote of confidence that all of you have in me. I want to, you know, say thank you to my parents, Pam and Henry, and my, my sister Valerie. Jamal, her husband is not here, but they're, they're kind of the pit crew for my, my kids and her kids during the weeks to make all of this, this work. My nephew Landon is his brother and sister. Who I'm here, Carter and Sadie, and then obviously my kids, Amelie, Henry and Ainsley, love you guys so much and appreciate. You guys making me laugh at the end of a long day, and and then obviously Alexa here, who is a fantastic wife, but also an English teacher who. Gives so much energy to Eastline as well and couldn't do it without her, this moment is, you know, as much hers as it is mine, so. Appreciate everybody here and and thank you very much for the opportunity.
But you can keep laughing, okay? People after going, it's important.
They don't get to see serious me in the office.
They're being very serious.
You know, congratulations and and one thing that brought up an executive session, I'll, I'll repeat it, it is really nice. That we're in a district where we can grow our talent internally and develop them and they grow into these roles and Claudine and Henry both. You know. Portray a lot of what we want in our values and climate and culture and what they're driving and and it's nice to see that. That growth, so we're, we're really excited to have both of you. In officially in those roles, so thanks so much.
Two minute recess in the lounge.
Yeah.
We, yeah, yeah, yeah. That way, maybe you can, it's Board of Ed Appreciation Month in March, so timing was perfect with cake and some food, so maybe on your way out, you can grab some food and the kids are hungry. Yeah, we could, you want to do some quick pictures too? What do you think?
Yeah.
Let's get a couple of them, yeah, yeah. That's social media, girl.
artifacts.
That's all you can?
Yeah.
Come on, we'll get a picture.
Hey.
Okay, Jamie's taking some.
I was ready to go. Why don't you guys admit the picture too? Just let them go.
Oh, yeah, you should be your expressions. You know, like when you.
Whatever you want to do.
All right, we'll get this in person. Actually, this is like if you go.
All right.
You see. It looks like, oh, there's this big thing, but it's really just this little. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. It will be really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you again for being here, appreciate it. No, they have some that's like.
Bye, oh, thank you.
Pull out and.
Now I get to find the clean prints of.
I'm up, yeah, all right.
I I would love to include Deb in this too, Deb.
Yeah.
Come on up here.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. I don't know where I'm looking. You're getting candid shots.
Picture of the family?
Sure.
Family, family. All right, come on in.
Looks so pretty.
I know, everybody's dressed up. Dinner after this? Dad, going out to dinner after this?
I don't know, I don't, I mean, we should.
I like the idea.
Yeah, we need, we'll get the.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, you got it, okay. Yeah, you got it kind of. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Renz, thank you, thank you, yeah. Thank you, you stop making snacks.
Take care of yourselves. Good job, good to see you, okay? Good to see you. Good to see you. You as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Deb, good night, okay? Talk to you soon, Deb, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Transition, you can.
For transition to Zoom, I mean. On your way in the car.
Oh, no, I didn't see this.
He said we're pretty much gone.
I was looking, I was looking down. I skipped seven, eight, nine.
Okay, moving on as we reconvene for discussion action for instruction. And we have for discussion information, we have the Director of Student Services Kimberly Davis, who's going to give an update.
Can you allow me to share my screen, please? Sorry, I thought it was, I had the button. There we go. Yeah. Sitting here trying to make that small. I always forget that when the show screen is, I can't finagle it. Oh, sorry. I always wonder. All right, so we're presenting a little bit jointly for you tonight, Annalise and I, so we have a little bit of data to share and then I'll get into some other special education updates, so. So I'll kick us off, yeah, because at our fall meeting. When I had presented on the summative assessment data from the spring of twenty twenty-three. Um, I know it's hard to see this data, but I put a little red circle up here, and I love the fact that I could walk around now and I'm not stuck to that podium. Um, this was representative of our students with disabilities cohort. Um, and so if you take a close look at these um, these lines on the graph. So you get, this is the district performance average. So essentially, it's the average score on the um summative assessment SBA tests and from the spring. The blue line is essentially where our students averaged for um, you know, for ELA. And the gray line is where we've averaged for math. This top cohort of bars represents both the state and Eastline Public Schools and within that cohort. So this is students with disabilities. The yellow is the state math average. Um, the gray is the ELPS math average. You can see that we were above average. Um, then the state in math. The orange is the state ELA at forty-five point three. And for ELPS, uh, we were at fifty-two point three. And what I had pointed out to um the board at the time was that we saw an eight-point loss in math with our special education students from the year before. And so, um, one of the board members had asked, well, can you peel back the layers, the onions a little bit for us to see closer where maybe we made, where that loss came from? So, Kim, if you wanna just click it forward. Interesting enough, interestingly enough, and probably to no surprise to any of us around the table. Where we saw that loss was from the grade four, five transition in math. So this is now representative of our, just our sped cohort. This is a two-year cohort analysis from one grade to the next. So, for example, this was grade four in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the blue line here under the red circle. And the yellow one is the grade five. So those same students in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, and math. So we had significant drop in that cohort. So we talked a lot about, well, this mirrors what are, I mean, it's definitely a, a harsher reality of what we see with our um core students, our non-disabled students, but um, it does mirror what we see in terms of that gap of um. Achievement. And so Kim and I had met and talked about it. And so Kim's going to actually shed a little bit of a different light with regards to what is the data that we look at in relation to our special ed population that helps us to our, to identify what truly are the needs of the students and what individualized supports might they need to help them move forward with their um individual goals and objectives on their IEP. So I'm gonna pass it off to Kim for further explanation.
Yeah, because the uh smarter balanced assessments are only one piece of information we gather about any of our students. And this, you know, so that holds true uh for our students with disabilities as well. Keeping in mind too that uh the SBA data is only available for grades three through eight. So it doesn't capture, you know, all of our students, you know, who have received services for disabilities pre-K through twenty-two, right? So, they were just, that was just looking at a cer- a small lens. So I just wanted to start a little bit about, um, sometimes when I talk, uh, some of you say, you know, um. You just anecdotally share that you're not that familiar with special education or some of the terms in special education. So I thought in my update tonight, I would just include, this is actually a snapshot from my dashboard that I took today from CTSEDS. And so, it is my. I know, right? So, um, and I don't know why the text isn't all the way clear on CTSEDS either. This is literally how I see it every day. But these are the thirteen disability categories that we have um the ability to qualify students educationally for special education. As educators, we don't diagnose, for example, autism spectrum disorder. We just say that the student has a cluster of characteristics that indicate they need service in a specialized way. Um, with, you know, it's specific supports, and so therefore qualify under the autism spectrum uh disability. So that is not the same as a medical provider saying that they meet the DSM diagnosis, for example, um, of autism. So the top one is, which is a little marred, I apologize, is speech language impaired. And actually, what I'm gonna do is just kinda go in order from our, the largest area of students where we serve students down. So you can see in our SLD, specific learning disability, we have currently a hundred and nine students. Our next area is that autism spectrum disorder. Then in third place from that, this, at the top, is speech language impaired. So that encompasses students who, anything from a young child with an articulation um error. Maybe those Rs haven't come in quite yet, to students who are what we call apraxic and have genuine difficulty with the muscles and motor planning to formulate sounds or other language um needs. Then we have um. Lost my place. I, OHI, so the O is cut off here. OHI, other health impaired. ADD, Attention Deficit Disorder. So then we have uh that as a high. You know, those are sort of our top four. Um, and then SLD-D is SLD dyslexia. So they do, the state does break out those two areas on our bar graph for us. Um, the other areas are, again, the O for whatever reason is missing here, but this is other health impaired. So that encapsures other health impairments that might limit a child's vitality or strength. Um, such as cerebral palsy might be in, um, or we might have someone uh with a significant uh health syndrome that just impacts their access to attendance and stamina. Um, so they might be captured in that other health impaired category. MD stands for multiple disabilities. You can see that's a very small N for us, only five. That involves cognitive, you have to have a combination of cognitive or motor, cognitive or visual and hearing. So it has to be a certain combination of disabilities. ID stands for intellectual disabilities, which is a cognitive impairment. ED stands for emotional disability. DD is developmental disability. This one is unique because a student can only have that label until they um. It has to be changed before their sixth birthday. So up till age five, basically. And then, so a lot of our preschoolers have a, you know, we identify them as having a developmental delay. And then as they head into kindergarten, we're looking to see, you know, do they meet the criteria or continue to need services in another area? Or have they moved on and that delay has sort of um closed, like maybe their speech was delayed? And so that gap closes and then they go on to kindergarten and don't need any further services. So that one is age sensitive. All the rest can be pre-K through age twenty-two. So, um, that's a little bit about the kinds of disabilities that we serve.
Hey, thanks, Kim. This is great. I have a couple questions. So one is. Are each of these categories mutually exclusive so that the student is not, each of these are individual students? You can't be in.
That is true.
Identified, okay.
The state of Connecticut only allows you to check one box.
But, but students could.
Could have needs that cross over, but you'd only be counted one time in each of these bars. Yeah.
And then, is there a, some kind of document that actually takes each of these, as you describe them? Like have a little paragraph that's somewhere? Cause I'd be interested in getting a copy of that.
Well, you see, you know, so we operate under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act idea, for sure, right? And idea at the federal level has a definition for each of these categories. And then some Connecticut has tweaked just a little bit, some of those categories. So I can give you the Connecticut definition.
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
Absolutely. I know, that's a little. Okay, alright. Any other questions about this slide? Alright, so knowing that we have this wide variety of students that we're serving, right? And uh, and keeping in mind, obviously, they, you know, participate in the assessments. Um, and it's not always the best measure of their progress. I, I created this slide with a few examples of things that we do find useful in informing our, the progress of a student with an IEP. Um, the ironic thing is I put these together is these are all literacy and reading assessments. And so clearly, we need to improve our inventory of math. Um, but, so, you know, we're looking for how a student is reading in terms of their fluency and their comprehension. We're looking at their phonological awareness. Uh, the Gestel Ellis is another phonological awareness coding, you know, cracking the code. Uh, or phonics, you know what phonics is. Um, the EZCBM for reading fluency is about words per minute. Because words per minute fluency indicates how much text you'll be able to get through, and that correlates to other progress down the line. Um, the Wade is an assessment related to the Wilson Reading Program, which is a very specific uh curriculum for students. Typically, um, who have a learning disability in the area of reading or dyslexia respond well to. And then key to everything is the progress monitoring that special education teachers and related service providers do with progress monitoring, the goals and objectives. And so as you know, in special education, every student has an individualized education plan, an IEP, right? And so the I is in there on purpose to make it individual. Um, and so that makes it hard to generalize sometimes when we talk about data and students' progress. Because the whole reason for an IEP is that a student needs specialized and direct instruction, which is a bit different usually than what is happening in the general education classroom. So can be in parallel to the curriculum, can be part of the curriculum, can be alternate to the curriculum. Um, so it ha- it takes many different forms. Any questions? If you just wanna hit it, I'll save it for sure. Um, and then so a measure of our progress as a whole is something the state gives us, which um, it's a little misleading. They called it the twenty-twenty-three annual performance report, but it's based on our twenty-one, twenty-two data. And this is published in EdSite. Um, and on these indicators are what the district is measured for our um efficacy with special education, basically. So I monitor these things. And if any of these are not going well, the state contacts me directly and says, you know, Director of Student Services, we need you to pay more attention to X. So we uh meet all the requirements uh on this list. So we're not in danger of needing additional technical support or on the bad list um at the State Department um in any of our indicators. So, and you can see the, the um smarter balanced assessment is not an indicator on this list. So the state is not measuring, using that as a measure of our success of the district. We are, of course, keeping our eye on it for our students with special needs. Um, but again, balancing it as one data point among many. So, any questions? I brought kind of the printout of this in case you wanted any more information on the different indicators. Well, I have, thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Thanks, Annalise.
No, I don't have a question, but can we get it attached to the board doc so that we can look at it on our own?
Yes, I'll get, I'll get it to Carissa. Thanks.
So add to the, the variety as well.
Yeah, I mean, just adding it to the board docs should be.
Yeah, man, Annalise, that was, that was very good and very helpful and uh enjoy these sessions is help. Help me learn more about different areas.
Can I just add one piece, one piece of information that I forgot to include, which I think is really important? Cause it's the now what, which is really important when you see a dip in those scores. And that is that the six, those are now sixth grade students who are um eligible for the high-dose tutoring that's happening in math. So, um, we opened up that opportunity not to just regular education students, but all students. And so that number, uh, that cohort number's around thirty-five students, and we've offered it to them. I don't have the number as to how many have opted into it, but I can get that for you if that's something you're interested in. Okay.
I, I, I can just build on that, cause I was gonna ask and I didn't. We changed fifth grade, or the timing, I think we kept more time in math and more time for ELA, right? Well, we see the. But do you think we'll see the impact of that when we, as soon as this year? When we take the test scores in theory?
Yeah, we, our, our bench, we were gonna talk about that at the mid-year uh goal update.
Oh, okay.
Our benchmark assessments are showing promising results.
Okay, okay, good. Well, let's move to the next.
There, I met with um Kristen Amberball, our math coach, and met through some of the data. Um, just in terms of the students that are benefiting, of course, the extra time, the changes that we made. Um, you know, following the, what the year-long um review for grade five. Um, so we are close to right now, right now, meaning that ten percent closing the gap. So, um, I'm, I'm really hopeful and promising that we'll even exceed that by, by closer to May, too. So.
Okay, so the next um topic is discussion, mid-year review of Board of Education Goals twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. We had, so we, we've got our goal done in time for the school year, which is the first time, probably in a long time at least. And so that was great, and we approved those. And then we had said we'd do a review in, you know, I'll take some responsibility. But we, we, we should, we probably should have done a review in December. We got caught up in other things. So this is kind of our first review. Hopefully, next year, we at least do two, like, reviews and see how we're doing. But this is our first review. We can, we'll do another one, obviously, as we get to the end of the year. Um, but I'll pass it over to Jeff, who'll give a update on how we're doing and even our goals.
Yeah.
And our outcome metrics.
Yeah, so we can, and we can open this up for, you know, some conversation, just because these are your goals and my goals, you know, mirror a lot and expand on, you know, the goals that uh. You know, all of you set in place. And thank you again for getting these set um earlier, because I think that was the best move we could have made. Uh, and we gotta keep that practice going. So we'll plan that out as we move closer to the summer. Pathways programming, um, there was three goals there. Um, one and two, um, you know, opening up the, the program, you know, to the entire ELHS student body. And then two is creating that baseline for student participation. So we do have some numbers associated with that. So for twenty-three, twenty-four this year, we have involved kids in a hundred and sixty-seven experiences, pathways-related experiences. Um, so to kind of put that, you know, in a greater perspective, last year, twenty-two, twenty-three, there was six programs or organizations that we were affiliated with through pathways. This year, we're up to seventeen programs and affiliations. So we have more than doubled um the outreach and the number of organizations and groups that, and the experiences that we're um having kids, you know, involved in. Um, reason why with the experience is you've got some kids that have involved themselves in multiple um pathways opportunities. So, um, you know, we don't have a hundred and sixty-seven students, uh, but we have maybe sixty-seven experiences. So, that's pretty good. And then we will be surveying students, because the third goal was at least seventy-five percent of student participants will be satisfied with the program. So, uh, Mr. Sulo is putting together the survey, and that will be going out probably in May sometime. So we'll get that final kind of participation interest level.
Can I just, I wanna comment on this, because I saw the social media post that we have two students who actually signed with EB because of their pathway programs. They're gonna be starting after graduation, which I thought was great.
Yeah.
So that's real evidence of the pathways program doing its job.
Exactly. One quick question. So what's the, are freshmen eligible or freshmen can do this as a, okay?
They can, they're not as much, they're more, um, we try and involve them in some of the, the conversations, uh, the career readiness components.
Yeah.
Um, before getting out into it. But we do have some freshmen that are involved in some pathways experiences. Yeah. Yep, so we continue to grow, um, you know, those numbers, which has been, uh, which has been great. So, and we can have Dave come back too and, and talk to at the end of the year as part of the survey. We'll get a full, full update.
That'd be great. And I think Kim talked about each of this. Opportunity of seventeen and what there is and.
Yeah, you can break it down and, yep.
And I guess if we can do. I don't know how we thank the organizations that are partner, we're partnering with.
He's good. He does letters to them. Yeah, good. Um, anytime we, we go offsite or go to one, we, um, you know, we'll thank them with a follow-up letter. Any donations that he receives, um, you know, we thank them with a, a follow-up letter. Rotary, for instance, you know, they've donated the last couple of years. So we always make sure, um, it's imperative that we're, we're reaching back out. Um, and the, the grand dollars continue to come in from the work that gave in high school we did.
Well, there's a need or an opportunity for Board of Ed to occasionally send a thank you or anything. I think we can maybe do something.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's ever a chance. Looking to see if Joe, cause Joe probably has like, that, can we once maybe go and see what happened, like the Ferns or something like that and go. Um, that would be kind of interesting to, to see it ourselves.
Definitely.
It's a great idea. Jeff, along those same lines, that maybe, because this thing is growing so well, um. Maybe there's some sort of plaque that gets designed that says that they could hang on the wall of their business that says, you know, contributing member of the Eastline, you know, Career Pathways Program. Or I, I don't know, something like that. And that's kind of a neat thing, depending, you know, you walk into the garage and it's kind of sitting on. I, I don't know. I just, I think that kind of thing is nice.
Davey mentioned, we've got our new laser cutter in red.
That thing is, I have one that, that's perfect for that. It's super easy. You can make one that's, you know, you, someone design it so that it's kind of uniform for each of the businesses, and then, then it has its own, takes on its own logo, its own thing.
I'll talk to Dave about that. Um, that would be great. That's a good idea. I'll talk to Dave about that. Um, that would be great. That's a good idea. Yeah, I'll say, yep.
Awesome. I like that.
Excellent. So that work, obviously, we'll uh, you know, we'll continue. Numbers are looking good. Um, the participation, now we're working on the survey. Uh, and and student satisfaction component. Um, culture and climate, um, you know, that started with Bill and Annalise's work through triple A, um, which. We've got a forty-two member committee, um, has met twice now. We have our third meeting coming up. Um, and Bill and Annalise chiming, been great at leading the charge with our culture and climate work.
It's our fourth, is it our?
Is it the third? It's a third, isn't it?
Well, maybe. I don't count anymore.
We we did, yeah, we're doing four, I think, on the year.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The next one is the survey.
An in-between.
Uh, the, yeah, the main committee, but a smaller subcommittee met to work on survey questions or look at.
Steps around the survey questions. Yeah. Is that a survey that went out last week? No, that was the, that was um the youth prevention survey.
I know, I, yeah.
Survey's next.
So this is all kind of culture for parents, students, um, etc. So, um. Yeah, so work continues there and those surveys will go out in May, right?
Oh, for April break is. Right after April break. That's, that's our, yeah, projected.
Target, right?
Yeah.
So, uh, and this, uh, so that's, that goal is moving along and progressing. Um, high-level instructional practices, we did target. The percentage of fifth graders, Claudine and Annalise just mentioned some of the work there. And if you want any further follow-up on some of those. Numbers or when we'll.
Yeah, I mean.
Back on those.
Yep, so we're tracking right now um students' progress towards that goal with. Uh, our I-ready assessment, which is our benchmark assessment. And I know that um Kristen had provided um Claudine with some benchmark data, which I have in front of. Me right now. Um, so. For example, our fifth graders in the fall um of this school year were uh seventy-four, seventy-five, four percent were on or about. Oh, it must be numbers, I'm assuming. Seventy-four were on or above grade level and right now we're at one oh ones. At on or above grade level. So.
Students are one one percent.
Number of students.
Okay.
I know, I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's great.
Number of students. So if we think about. That's just the, you know, obviously we have more students on grade level now than we did at the beginning of the school year, which is what we want. But if you think about, you know, we've still that decrease in proficiency that we see from four to five. Last year, we saw a twelve percent de- decrease. Um, from grade four to grade five as it relates to the winter benchmark. So for example. Ninety-three students were at benchmark in the winter um benchmark for grade four, that same cohort of students. In grade five, um, only eighty-two. So we, there was a twelve percent decrease that was from. The last year's cohort. This year's cohort, we have a three percent decrease. We like that. It's a decrease, but it's a much smaller decrease.
How many kids are in that cohort? So if a hundred and one are at or above, how many kids are there?
How many total?
Yes, please.
Um, quick math, about a hundred and seventy-five.
One seventy-five?
One seventy-three.
One seventy-three.
So we think that these results are very promising. I attribute these results to the very hard work of our fifth grade teachers. Um, and, you know, and the support that they've gotten in the new curriculum, um, being open to changing their math practices in the classroom. Uh, the work of Kristen Amaral and her support of them implementing that curriculum. The support of the board in the way of professional development for folks. Um, we did bring on a consultant to help implement the curriculum this year. That was critical. It's always really critical to have that level of support when you're rolling out a new program. Um, and, you know, the flexibility of all of the staff members at the middle school on taking on a new schedule in fifth grade. So that math and literacy could see more instructional time over the course of the school day. And I will say, we've been able to do that with minimal impact on. All of the things we we also value in terms of development of the whole child, the special areas and access to elective classes. So. I'm really excited.
Other considerations too that have been really helpful is the addition of the math coach is for Kristen to be able to. Support our teachers through the coaching cycles. I think that that has been extremely, extremely valuable as well as the um. Level uh of the um P D opportunities during explicit instruction this year. For all teachers in the building and um the ongoing discussions and supports and the. The modeling and the sharing out. Um, that has been the focus of our professional development throughout the course of the year and will continue to go forward next year as well. And um I think the thing that's been really helpful is, you know, the P D opportunity. And then being able to have it have turn into application directly into what it, how and what it relates to our staff um day-to-day in the building. Um, that has been just, I think, another huge driving factor to help uh move things in a, in a much more positive direction.
I'll just add one more thing. But I think the tiered, you know, uh, we have a great interventionist at the middle school, Regina Turgen, who does a phenomenal job with our tier two and tier three students. So those students who need extra support. Um, and, you know, I know she works very closely with Kristen as well. But, uh, you know, we've, uh, I do think that that helps to close that gap too. Um, in building, doing those just-in-time interventions so kids can be successful in the core. So. It's good stuff.
It's exciting. You know, we still, we still wanna continue to move the needle.
Yeah.
Um, we're happy with the gains that we are seeing, but we would still like to continue, continue to, um, you know, make the, make the gains more prominent. Um, and, you know, we have sat down and started talking about future considerations. Um, you know, and I will share that with Annalise at my mid-year with her, where I'd like to go and. Um, you know, support in the direction that um we'll be looking forward forward to is and be probably coming forth and carrying with you at some point too.
And then the other piece of that uh goal was the financial literacy component of the high school. And I know we're gearing up for incoming freshman class. Um, and being able to branch out with that certification too, to uh not have a pigeonhole just to nurse a screen, for instance. Um, with the business certification. If there's other um other elements of certifications that can cover that class. So I know we're. Debbie, wanna share anything else on some of the work that's going on there?
Um, I think this summer Narcissus is gonna write a curriculum that can be followed by all of the other teachers we've met. Kind of the stakeholders that could be teaching it have already met to discuss what this is gonna look like. And it's, it's kind of a phase in because it's this current freshman class, but they probably won't take these classes for a couple more years. So. I feel like we're really kind of ahead of where we need to be as far as making sure that we're ready for it when it comes.
Those are high-level instructional um practices, assessment growth, and the marketing and branding. Um, we are riding the shoulders of Kevin Marqu.
Yeah.
Uh, in the sports world. Who's killing it with, uh, you know, the the marketing aspect um and getting, which has been phenomenal. Um. Just in that world, we'll generate, you know, uh, probably well over four or five thousand dollars. Um, scoreboard piece of the baseball field, that's gonna be coming in soon. We have the basketball score table as well. So. That's all out in the community generating dollars. Or uh, for those pieces and that extra money then is, goes into um the athletic offers uh as well. Once that's paid off, so.
He's doing the golf tournament.
He's got the golf tournament set. Um, so that will be the first ever um under. V D, a golf tournament. So uh, in September, we'll get more information, date fires, and that's, you know, that's printed, so money as well. Um, you know, we're still working our, on our, you know, marketing and social media and Instagram. Now, get some things out, we're, you know.
He's near a thousand, I think. Near a couple hundred.
Like, maybe, yeah, like.
We're, we're getting, I do, I will say there, I do think they're two different things. Kevin has figured out how to make it work for athletics. We haven't quite figured out totally how to make it work for academics, you know, that other piece. And so.
Very diff, I mean, uh, I'm gonna follow, see pictures of my kids. I mean, I, right, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wanna see. So let's. What's the poll? The more.
Is the football game versus who watches sixty minutes? Come on, it's like.
Yeah.
You've got, you're competing against, uh.
Yes.
Think that, you know, we've had some really important conversations around what do we wanna put out for content? Um, especially with, yeah, some of our younger students and posting pictures of them. It's different than posting a picture of a high school athlete, right? Who, you know, those are just very two different categories. And so. Just really trying to be mindful about that while still trying to find opportunities to celebrate our successes along the way. So. We're, we're working on it. We'll have a little bit more progress by the end of the year.
On Eastline Public School Athletics.
Oh, okay.
Models that you're, that you find. Successful or that you like or that you've been exposed to for, for like academics.
I mean, we saw the, the guy from Oxford, right? That was, we were at the conference and I did get inspired by his work. Um. But he also was doing selfies with the super, like, just a, a different, um, from a, from a. Philosophical standpoint, it's different. So I would say that was, that's been like the only person that sort of got my juices flowing, but. I haven't really, a- aside from my own hometown where they post, you know, once in a blue moon, I haven't really come across. A district, um. That I feel like, oh, I aspire to be that. Um.
Caution is the word.
Yeah, so Windsor, you know, my, my, my sister district Windsor. Uh, Dr. Hill has a person who does social media all day, every day. They have a full-time staff member and she has. Exploded for them. They post first day of school welcomes, everything. And it is phenomenal. I'm like, oh, my friends in Windsor, look what they're doing.
But it's every, every.
Their approach is very deliberate, right? So. Positive messaging to their district, to their town. Um, this is what we're doing. These are all the exciting things we're proud of. Yeah, it's a lot.
It may be a part-time position eventually. I mean, it is continuing to 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 grow.
Dr. Bill said that the best thing he's ever done for that, their marketing and social media is to hire someone who they only have to worry about.
Yeah, cuz it's hard when you're. Yeah.
Just, yeah, we just don't.
Yeah.
Annalise is great about taking pictures. We're in the schools. I'm not as good at that.
And I share them with you guys.
You notice, yeah, I'm, I'm not really a picture person sort of thing, but.
I don't, I, I feel okay with internal, like, hey, look what's going on, but to put those out into the universe, little. Little people. Yeah, right? I know, I know.
Work will continue there, obviously, and then. Oh, sorry, but, yeah, no, I, just one, one um question again. That these were, goals were set, you know, for my, I, I got a board. Um, what was the vision, the, you know? That was foreseen as far as advertising was concerned, which you talked about athletics, but. Was, was there a broader vision or it was just for athletics?
It was establish a more, establish a presence, because we really, we had no central office, um, Instagram. Or we just, we weren't, the schools were pushing out some information, but we were not from a central office. We'd done newsletters in the past, but we were just trying to basically get a. A baseline of, of social media presence through central office. That was the. That was really our advertising that generated revenue.
Yeah, what, what was, what was that vision? I mean.
So, so we had talked about, for as long as I've been on the board, probably longer than that, is, uh. You know, why can we generate, put signs up on the turf field and but do, and. We talked about it every year and we've like had zero for years, like we're close to zero. And so we wanted to put something, say, let's at least move the needle. Now we got. Lucky, we're at serendipity, whatever that we bring in, A D, Kevin, who's. Came in, like, this is his area, like, he's great at this. And so he's. Helped us achieve this, exceed this goal because he's, you know, right on this. And I think he's gonna help us. Get to those next levels of what can we really do from a revenue standpoint, both in athletics and maybe there's other opportunities as well. We have done, I mean, the E M T is generating revenue in theory because we have.
Yeah.
Students from other districts and in there, yeah.
There's other pockets, um, you know, as well.
But, uh, but that, that was the thinking behind this, yeah.
That, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea. I think it, it helps out, especially, you know, if we, if we are short on dollars and. On, on some, some things from athletics that, that we could, you know, this could, this could help out. I was wondering, you know, is, I, it's, I, you know, the Viking saga is, is something that the school, you know, students put out. You know, could be solicit advertisement there because that, that's a captive eight hundred uh student population. Uh. Again, I, I don't know which local businesses would be interested, but I think it might be worthwhile asking that question.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have to charge a lot, but, you know, any, any amount would help. Because the Viking saga, I mean, I, I start, I, I, I read them, you know, they, they, they have an online presence as well, you know, and. I think, I think there's something that you can look at.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. And you could have the students have to try to. Bring generate that, which is.
That, that would be.
Whether it's the saga, people who were partnering with the business class or somebody like that who. Yeah, that's great.
Talking with Deb and Jeff Beal about that.
Um, Jeff, for the, like, an inventory, if we know of the various um social media. Accounts, I guess, right? So there's like the district, there's athletics, there's the face school. Like, do we have a good sense of what the inventory is?
Yeah, we cleaned all of those up, um, because they're all over the map, um, with different, even parents that had created ones for the school. So. We put a, an E L P S behind all of the ones that are now ours. Um, I have the full list. We could share that and then we could up there. You can see our, our entire list.
Yeah, you just type in E L P S, it'll all just pop up.
What do you think we have, like, about, is it, I mean. Counseling now, right, and.
Yeah, like, a lot of departments have.
Yeah.
Them, um.
Um, well, I mean. Our official, the official pages that we created, like, like the high school renamed, there's E L P S. Eastline High School.
I think the counseling office did too.
Okay. Um, but I'll tell you, like, like some of the other schools have them, but haven't started using them. So the elementary schools, they're out there, they have them created, but they haven't, we haven't launched them yet. Um, cuz the, the plan was support the buildings that already had them, which was the middle school and the high school. Central Office sort of got on board this year with um our parameters and then we were gonna open it up to the other, yeah. Oh, and the, yep, Summer Fun Club. So some of our revenue programming that we like to use the social media pages for communication. But you'll see that, like, Nyanic Center probably has no hooks, right?
No.
They, they haven't really got going, yeah. So I, I mean, I can say the ones that we launched new, it would be the three elementaries, central office. Fun club and the fun club. I think middle school and the high school had them.
Right, right.
Um, but the three elementaries have not, you know, we're still trying to work through them.
So, yeah, we can kind of.
Yeah, even like for an update, because I feel like the list is different than when we first started talking.
Yeah, it keeps, it should, it should continue to evolve as well. Um, you know, and, uh. One, one of the, the Ed Foundation, we have shared the work that, you know, we did the week up there, what we've been doing with them. They're getting closer. To, uh, you know, to, to go launch. Um, so that work is in progress. Um, and you talked about some of the shifts and changes too that align with some of this. Ariana and I, we talked about the pool and Ariana and her team in the finance office has done an amazing job working to. Um, to catch up on all the billing and clean up a, a lot of, you know, the aquatic center um components that were. That were, that needed cleaning up with the shift. Um, and we are at, what was it, forty-three? We've grown the pooling, like, one three thousand.
Cash balance.
Cash balance is forty-three, yeah, the highest it's been in. Yeah, so we have credit still from COVID that we have to continue to pay down, um, that people had on the books. But it's the most.
When you see the February financials, you'll see the revenue is definitely on target to be higher than last year, which is good.
So we, uh, I think the, the shifts and changes we've made are making a difference in the aquatics and a lot more. Aquatics and a lot more marketing is going on in that area as well. It's a great time with Andrea Scott. As I mentioned, because she's overseeing for after-school programs, she's putting flyers out to those parents, hey, lessons, bring your kid lessons, uh.
We used to go out, they go out and sway every week, but.
They do. She's just, you know, it's another promotional avenue that she's kicking in, into gear now, um, do a good job, so.
Any other questions, comments, have to go off? Good progress that we're.
Yeah, we're all doing well with the, before the end of the year and kind of final, final numbers.
It seems like the outcome metric, you know, we put together, seemed pretty good. It's.
A lot, a lot about it, yeah.
You know, I think there's. Especially our first time doing outcome metrics and everything, it seems it's worked out well. Okay, moving on, discussion, action items, policy. So the first one, discussion, action, second review, policy, four points. Four, one, one, one. Point three, increasing educated diversity. And I'll tell the, uh, Jeff had put something in the Friday update. Turnover, thank Jeff for this one, and then the others I'll turn over to him.
Yeah, right. Yes, wanted to make sure you had a chance to, uh, to take a look at the increasing educator diversity plan. Which was created off of the, uh, that committee, um, that I had outlined and shared in information about. Um, this is a mandate from the state, um, which every district has to create. It falls under the policy. Um, because we all have to change our minority recruitment policy to now be the increasing educator diversity policy. Um, so we had a, a lot of close work with Learn, um, on this, uh, Gretchen, one of the representatives from Learn. Worked with us for our two meetings, uh, Simon was part of, um, one of those meetings, appreciated, you know, his input. Um, this is pretty expansive, um, and I think it's really pushing us in the right direction. It's a lot of things we've talked about. Um, and have been tracking, but not getting it out there on, on paper and kind of, you know, making sure that we are using data metrics. Uh, to, to monitor and measure, you know, our hires and our hires of color. Um, so, uh. There is a big piece in the three categories, recruitment, hiring and selection, and then the retention aspect. So, um, I know the font was a little bit, a little bit small, it's kind of a, a bit of a wonky document, you know, which. Thanks to Chris, as she flipped it for us, um, because the one we have to submit to the state, you can't change that template. Um, and it's all across the top with the categories. Chris was able to move them down the side, left inside. So at least you can see the bull, the goals a little bit clearer going across the, um, the top now for the, for the three areas, but, um. Lot of neat and different ideas and things that we were talking about, you know, through this, um, that we're, uh, we're excited about. Um, and we do have affinity, an affinity group going through Learn, a lot of connections with Learn, which need to grow, so that's part of this plan. So any questions about the plan? Yeah, you, yeah.
Um, the first paragraph, can we get rid of to this end and make it just the word of it?
Were you on the first page?
On the policy.
Oh, the policy, sorry.
About the agenda is the policy.
Yeah. Um, in the policy itself, you're talking?
The very first paragraph.
Yeah, too, you want to get rid of to this end?
Please.
We can do that.
And I know I had talked about it, the policy meeting added verbiage, but I know we also have to push this. So we can recycle it back to policy, so we can add the verbiage of all people being involved.
You want to take the, this policy presented back to?
Yes, please.
Okay, and you, to do what again?
To add in the verbiage of all those involved in the hiring process should be informed of the discrimination process.
Oh, with the, uh.
Just board employees.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know we, we talked about pushing this through because it has to be dated a certain date. But can we then put it back into policy and add verbiage that everybody enrolled in hiring? Instead of just board employees, because I would like it to be everybody involved. Whether it be a committee or what, not just board employees, but board members, teachers, staff, students, parents, whoever's on a committee.
Yeah, making that attempt to get everybody trained as part of a committee, right?
I know for now, we just have to push it forward, but I'd like it to recycle back.
Yes. And then we can get rid of the to the send.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
I'm good, Lisa. Want to bring it back around? Okay. All right, excellent. So we need, um.
I'd like to make a motion to, um. To, uh, approve the suggested revision of policy four, one, one, one point three, increasing educator diversity as presented. With the change. Um, the policy shall include the newly developed increasing educator diversity plan regulation.
Second. Other comment? All those in favor, say aye. And B, and Jill, I got you. I opposed, staying. And then we have five, uh. Sorry, B, C, D, E, F, alternative for first, we have first readings, Lisa, anything, yep.
Yeah, no, I'll go through the list there. I think there are more than five because we have some bundled in the.
Yeah, yeah.
Policy sections. So, um, so. Item B is for a first review for the revision of policy ten, ten, non-discrimination. Item C. Is for a first review of the revision of policy two, two, three, six. The retention and disposition of records and information. Item D. Is a first review of the following three policies in the three thousand series. They are thirty-one sixty, board budget procedures and line item transfers. Thirty-two sixty, the disposal of surplus equipment materials. Thirty-four forty, mixed asset inventories. Item E, a first review of the revision of policy four, one, one, eight, point, one, one. Non-discrimination personnel. And three, um, policies in the five thousand series and item F. Uh, recommended for a first review, five, one, one, eight, non-resident students. Five, one, four, five, point, four, one, non-discrimination. And five, one, one, two, admission to public school at or before age five. And comments or suggestions, um, please share them with Jeff.
Policy meeting on the eighteenth of March, to I believe, and we've got more that will be coming with some additional. Just new ones over the course of the year that, you know, have been revised based on legislation, so. Be going over those.
Well, that closes our discussion, action items, moving on to administration reports and Jeff.
Um, just a, a, a thank you to the board as March is Board of Ed Recognition Month. So, um, on your way out, please grab some cake and food, or if you want to mingle for a little bit. Um, we just wanted to say, uh, thank you for, uh, all you do as a board, um, and your time and energy that you put into, uh, this district. It is appreciated and, uh, your feedback and, uh, comments are, are valued and, uh, it's a great group to work with, so, thank you. Um, tomorrow, um, five o'clock, reminder, Board of Selectmen, uh, at Town Hall. Uh, we'll be presenting and sharing some slides on the budget and then talking about these budget books. So the, all of the Board of Selectmen, um, and Board of Finance members have those. Thank you to Mariana and her team for putting those, uh, together. Um, so that will be the, uh, the book that they'll reference. Um, forward to sharing that information with the Board of Selectmen. And then following that, if we get done in time, there's a Waterford Eastline basketball game, uh, here, there's game state tournament, so, uh, that's a six o'clock tip, I think, right? Is the basketball game? I think it's, I think it's six, ah, and it's a six on the, uh. Think it was, no, because it's a. Yeah, so, but that's tomorrow night, so, um, we have that going on. Um, we are doing and holding a facility asset committee meeting on, um, March eleventh. So we're going to start with that committee, start diving into some of the, that grandiose list of, uh, some updates, fixes, a lot of high school items. Things that, uh, we want to prioritize, um, with any end of year money that we have left, as well as if, uh, we're successful with the. The, uh, dollars that are in next year's budget, um, to work on and utilize, uh, as it pertains to facility upgrades. Um, so we'll be talking further about that and having some further discussions too about the high school in general. Um, retreat, uh, reminder for the week up there is for one. Erica and Lisa and I will meet and talk about, um, some agenda items, so we'll bring those, uh, forward and have some conversations with all of you on that. And then, um, I think that's pretty much it. If anybody is interested, I know Holly talked about some of the bills that come out. I mean, we get them regularly, um, it's sometimes a lengthy list, I don't want to overwhelm, but I'm happy to share some, Jamie, you mentioned it.
Yeah, I, because I actually occasionally write in.
Yeah, 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 done some, uh.
I will occasionally write in my thoughts and feelings.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on if anything looks like, you know, it's, again, they're all over the map. I know Chris Lund, we've talked about indoor air quality. Um, so he's, he's a hot one. He's actually drafting up some, um, some testimony as well. We talked about that, uh, this afternoon, so, uh. So stay tuned, but I can, I can share those if people are interested. And that was, uh, that was it. All I have.
I really don't have much from, you know, I think, I feel like I've done a lot of updating tonight, unless anybody has any specific questions for me.
Just really quick, I think Jeff shared it, um, in the weekly update, but we, um. Joe Berga and I, uh, did the electricity bid together this year, had timed our contract to end the same time as theirs. So we got a very favorable rate and I think that is partly because the market's down now, but also we. Went from bidding five million plus kilowatt hours to almost ten million kilowatt hours with the town. So, um, we realized almost a three cent savings that will be effective in November of twenty-four.
Hey, moving on to committee reports and I hope we didn't have today, so I don't think we had any, so maybe keep up the.
I have a lot. So, everybody got your mailbox today? There was a lot of actually really good information in here, so read it, look over it. Um, but Day on the Hill is March thirteenth at eight forty-five in the morning. They ask that you pre-register so they know how many people to expect. Um, convention proposals are due April fourth. The topic is champion, champion chima. Championing our schools through unity of purpose. Um, Board of Ed Appreciation Month is this year, month, uh, Delegate Assembly, they've already put out the dates, eleven fourteen for Delegate. And the convention is eleven fifteen and sixteen, um, and Student Leadership Awards nominees are due by three twenty-nine.
Any questions like you? Okay, I actually have a quick learn. So I've now gone to three learn meetings, so I'm starting to figure out what they do and I did meet with, um. The director to kind of give my own, get my own background and I thought I, I didn't know much, I'll, some may know this. I, I thought I'd spend like two minutes just giving, uh, kind of update on what Learn is and what they do, or at least at a high level, so. Learn is a R E S C or a C you might see, which is a Regional Education Service Center. And the districts that it covers, I need to, because it's broad reaching. From Stonington, North Stonington, up Preston, Norwich, Salem, East Haddam, East Hampton, Hannah, Kellyworth. All the way out to Guilford and then all back on the coastline. So there's like twenty-five or twenty-seven. Different districts that are all within, um. Learn. Um, when you look at some things that we partner with them on, but some of the, you know, I, I kind of find, there's two. For me, there's two other big pieces that they do and there's kind of this minor third or this other third. So one is the magnet schools, um, they're responsible for. So they run the Marine Science School, the Friendship School. Some of the New London Magnet schools are separate. I don't fully understand how that works, but they are separate. At some point I'll learn how that works. But the general magnet schools are run by Learn and they used to run the Goodwin School. Which, if you're, I don't know if you're familiar with it, I was not really familiar. Northern part of Connecticut, anyway, that's now, they're separating out, so they're creating. I think they now have the, the bandwidth or the understanding of what it takes to run, um, a school system. So again, I, it, it's happening now, so I, I don't really have much background. Um, but I didn't know that they ran the, the mag, they were responsible for the magnet schools. And then the other thing that they do is they actually provide a lot of services for someone. Predominantly for the smaller districts where they can run your fin, help run your finance or your I T, where you can't have an I T director. Cause you don't have, you don't have a need, enough of a need for an I T director, but you need someone who has that capability. So you, they have an I T director who you can basically pay for that service. But you're only taking ten percent of that person, not a hundred percent of that person. So it's, it's interesting what they provide. Um, they will provide to other, you know, larger districts like in Eastline. But we also have size that we, you know, we need a Mariana to lead our finance and we have an I T, you know, so they're. We're big enough that we don't necessarily need it, but they do bring some, you know, knowledge and expertise and then they're going to start doing these. Remote learning opportunities as well. So it's, it's kind of interesting of where they're coming to. I'm still, again, it's about my knowledge. Um, I have a couple of books that I'm kind of reading and trying to understand a bit more of what they do. But it, it is, it's much more broad reaching of what they do and the services they provide than I kind of understood. So I'll continue to, as I go to meetings and learn more, I'll continue, you know, provide updates. Um, the last piece that's not necessarily part of the Learn Board and what is. You have representative from all these, uh, different towns who get together, so there's some of that interaction of questions of, hey. I'm hearing this at my, this is happening at my board meeting, how'd you handle this? Or does your district, so you get some of that. Um, understanding of what's going on in these other districts and some of the challenges that they're facing. So it's kind of interesting learning to see, uh, from our kind of neighboring district, so. That's my learn update. Um, as I learn more, I'll, uh, and learn, as I learn more about Learn. I will, uh, provide more updates as well. Okay, that closes committee reports, uh, moving on to board comments and future agenda items. Amy?
I have a list again, but it's all community events. Okay, um, March ninth, there is a pickleball tournament at the clubhouse. Uh, proceeds for that are going to benefit the Waterford and Eastline Safe Grad Committees. Um, three fifteen, Nyanic Center Schools having their ice cream social. Three twenty-five is going to be a community Q P R training by the Brandeis Foundation. Um, three. Uh, question, uh, response, problem?
No.
Pro, probe, prompt, prompt, I think it's prompt. It's, um, like a suicide awareness training, but it's a community training, so if anybody wants to go. I'll, I'll get you the details. Off the top of my head, I don't remember, but I'll get you the details if you are interested. Um, three thirty is a hypnotist night here at the high school to benefit Safe Grad. Um, three fourteen to three seventeen, High School Drama Club is doing the spelling bee something. Thank you. And they're looking for, uh, audience participants to be in the spelling bee, so they have a link to fill out. If you want to be an audience member.
Sorry, spelling bee, a play or is it a spelling?
It's a play. It's a musical, I've heard, it's really good.
Yeah, yeah.
I gotta get my tickets. Um, and then three seven to three seventeen is restaurant week. If anybody wants to go out. Get together, send an email, text, I'm, I'll be glad to hit up with our local restaurants. They support us, so we should support them. And that's all I got. Seven to three seventeen. Anybody want to go out? Hit me an email, text. I'm all in favor of supporting our businesses because they really support us, so. And I don't, I, I'm all in favor of not cooking, so. If I don't got to cook. I'm there. That's all I got.
Thanks, Jamie.
Um, I, uh, attended something different, um, that I don't think is the first time it's happened, but the, uh. Some students from the high school performed in a band, like, a band, like a rock band. That's why I attended the Vanguard Group.
Um, what's their name?
Vanguard? And, uh, it was, um. And uh, it was um. It was actually really cool to see kind of students drive this performance, pick their own songs, pick their own instruments. They swapped instruments at one point, um they were like little rock star, not little, they were definitely rock star. You know, kind of uh cutting their teeth on the small, small stage, but I'm sure it was like the big stage, it was uh, I was actually. Surprised of the sort of some of the old school, like alt-rock song choices that they kind of pulled out, I was like, okay, that was.
Classic rock sixty-seven?
No, not classic rock, more like, I would say like, more like alternative, like alternative rock. But I mean, some of it dated back, and I don't want to date myself, but the Smiths, like.
Oh, yeah.
Back to high school, remember, yeah, um but, you know, like Weezer and some of the pilots and.
Do they have dates like?
They were fun.
I'll go, I love, love music.
You know what, I I knew about it through the social media, posted an Instagram, and I was like, doing anything, I'll go check that out.
That's pretty cool, they're high school students? Oh, I gotta.
Very talented, very talented crew, they had a pretty good turnout, at first I thought I was one of the only adults there, but I look. There, you know, all the parents. Yeah, they pulled off a nice show.
Very cool.
That's awesome, totally different vibes than like the band orchestra and chorus concert, so it was just a nice, you know, something different.
There they are, right here.
Other board comments, future items.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, staying, and we are adjourned, nice meeting, thanks everyone.
Let's take some food.